Mr. Jameson, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Call this meeting the order of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for January 4th, 2022. Roll call.
Schwartz?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Cholka?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Agenda received. This proposal is amended. I do have two amendments, nine B and nine C.
So moved.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comments? Anybody in the public that would like to have any comments before we get into the regular meeting? Seeing none, any online? Hearing none. We'll move on to years of service awards. Mr. Jameson?
Looks like we have two today. Brad Walsh from the Attorney's Office with 20 years of service. Brad here. You get this later, Brian. And Joseph Schmidt from the Sheriff's Office, also with 20 years of service. We'll get this to the sheriff.
Okay. Congratulations on the 20 years of service. Greatly appreciated. Next is claims and payments. James?
This week's expenditures total $112,935.89. The two larger departments were the Sheriff's Department at $29,392 and General Assistance at $42,157. Everything looked normal.
Thank you.
This is a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Cholka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. This is adopted. Next is an oral presentation by Clifton Larson Allen Fiscal Year 2021 Audit. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Miranda Wentland with Clifton Larson Allen, joining you this morning to present the results of the Fiscal Year 2021 Financial Statement Audit. First, I'll start with some of the required audit communications. Then we'll look at the financial statement highlights, then go through the results of the audit, including any findings and recommendations, looking at the results of the federal grant audit, as well as the state compliance findings, and wrap up with a brief conclusion. So as auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. In order to do that, we apply a risk-based audit approach. That means we don't review every financial transaction the county enters into. We focus on those accounts with significant balances or having a significant amount of activity flowing through the account during the year. We apply our knowledge of the industry, as well as information from reading the board minutes, having conversations with management, to come up with an overall risk assessment, and that drives our overall plan and audit procedures. We do some internal control review. Mostly, we're looking that the internal controls over dispersments and revenues are effective, and that allows us to give an opinion on whether or not the balance sheet is accurate. We do rely quite a bit on third-party confirmation, so we can contact the bank and get information on year-end balances, cash and investment balances, long-term debt, work with state agencies to get a summary of the intergovernmental payments that were issued to the county to make sure that they're properly reflected within the financial statements. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can provide as independent auditors. We experienced... So when you look at the financial statements, overall, management is responsible for the accounting policies and procedures. The Government Accounting Standards Board does govern how the policies are driven and how the accounting standards are reported. So you'll see this year that there was a change related to GASB-84 on fiduciary activities. Management took a proactive approach back in April and May. They reviewed the standard and how it may impact the county, completed multiple checklists, and made some changes in overall reporting in order to comply with the standard. Management, at the conclusion of the audit, presented us with a management representation letter indicating that, to their knowledge, the financial statements in front of you are clear, complete, and accurately reflect Fiscal Year 2021's financial results. We experienced no delays in issuing the audit or performing our procedures. No issues were discussed prior to our retention as independent auditors. There were no disagreements with management when it came to the implementation and accounting policies, procedures, or other audit matters, and no consultations with other independent accountants. As part of preparing for the audit, we have those planned audit procedures. As we perform those procedures, there may come a time when an audit adjustment is necessary. We proposed two audit adjustments related to infrastructure, capital assets, and recording additional retainage payable. There were also four minor adjustments that are considered past adjustments related... Three were related to the implementation of GASB-84, so it's required due to the change in standards. All right. Looking at the financial highlights, the financial statements are a significant packet. The breakdown of that is there's kind of an introduction section, which includes our independent auditor's report. There's also some management discussion and analysis. If you're not able to get through the whole report, I do recommend reviewing that management discussion and analysis. There's condensed financial statements within there, as well as some discussion by management on some of the changes in the individual funds, which you might find helpful. Then we get into the basic financial statements, which includes your government-wide statements, as well as your fund-level statements. And then there are budgetary schedules and combining schedules, followed by some of the statistical section that's some of the operating activity for the county. So the information here is coming directly from the audited financial statements, kind of that high-level overview, so you get a feel for what happened through 2021 on a modified accrual basis. Starting with the general fund, which is the primary operating fund for the county, overall revenues did exceed expenditures, and after transfers, there was a positive change in fund balance of about $5.7 million, which represents about a 23% increase over the prior year in your reserves. Before transfers to other funds, that excess was about $8.5 million. Revenues were up about 8% over the prior year, and expenditures were down 5%, contributing to that overall positive net change. Mental health fund, revenues came in at $4.2 million compared to expenditures of about $4 million. Overall positive change of $180,000 represents about a 30% increase in overall fund balance. Your rural services fund, $5.2 million in revenue compared to about $2.2 million in expenditures. There were transfers out to other funds of about $2.6 million. Overall, still a net positive change of $541,000, a 27% increase in fund balance over the prior year. Secondary road fund, revenues were up over the prior year, coming in at $6.1 million compared to expenditures of just over $10 million. So overall expenditures did exceed revenue. However, there are transfers of about $3.5 million from other funds to fund some of that capital. Overall, negative change in fund balance of $394,000, about an 8% change over the prior year. The debt service fund, there was an issuance of bonds in 2021. So part of that issuance, $14 million, was related to the solid waste commission, so there's about $4 million attributed to that. With that, there's a receivable setup from the solid waste commission, so that receivable recognition recognized or increased your fund balance by about $3.9 million. That'll decrease as the commission makes the debt service payment to the county. Overall, a 63% increase in fund balance. Capital project fund, or bond proceeds in the fund, so overall, after spending, it was $3.2 million increase in your capital project fund reserve, bringing your total reserve for capital to about $8.5 million. $6.6 million of that represents unspent bond proceeds. The other $1.9 million or so is transfers from other funds that have been committed for capital purposes. Your non-major column there represents some of those minor funds that roll into the aggregate non-major governmental funds. Overall, expenditures did exceed revenue by about $86,000 there, represents about 7% of fund balance, bringing your ending fund balance to $1,123,000. The breakdown of those non-major funds can be seen here. About 52% of that ending fund balance is related to the sheriff's commissary. The county does report two enterprise funds, rural water and rural sewer. Overall, net change was a deficit in both funds, primarily due to the recognition of depreciation expense. So as that infrastructure depreciates, expenses recognized systematically over the life of the asset. So with that, about $116,000 deficit in rural sewer, bringing the ending fund balance to just over $1 million. And with rural water, it was about a $76,000 negative balance, bringing your ending fund balance to $429,000. If we were to look at cash flow in those funds and exclude the depreciation, which is a non-cash item, sewer had a positive cash flow, about $25,000 after operations. Water was negative about $9,000 due to funding some repairs of about $16,000 during the fiscal year. So those are the financials on a modified accrual basis, more so on the operating, what you're used to seeing. There is a requirement to report on a full accrual basis, which captures all of the activity for the county, represents the total net position. So we add back in capital assets, we subtract your long-term debt. So taking a look at some of those balances, overall, the county's investment in capital assets is about $115 million. That's up $4.4 million from the previous year. There was about $11 million in investment in infrastructure during the year, offset by about $6.6 million in depreciation expense. No investment in the water and sewer assets. There was about $195,000 in depreciation expense. Looking at those long-term obligations of the county, like I mentioned before, there's about $14 million in bond proceeds during the year. $4 million went to solid waste, $4 million went to capital, and then the remaining was used to refund some of the existing debt, which resulted in a $275,000 interest savings to the county. So overall, debt is up about $3.5 million from the previous year, coming in just at just about $23 million. Some of those other long-term debts related to the unfunded net pension liability at the state, the county is required to recognize their proportionate share of the unfunded liability. That represents about $14.6 million of the liability on the financial statements. The other post-employment benefits is the estimated liability tied to offering health insurance to employees. And then compensated absences, the liability there, just at $2.1 million, represents vacation and sick time earned but not used yet by county employees. Overall, the next 10 years, the repayment schedule is anywhere from $5 million to $1.8 million in principal payments. So once we factor in all of those additional long-term capital assets and long-term liability, brings your fund balance from $58 million to a total net position, about $135 million. That is up $15.2 million from the previous year. One of the measures that we look at as auditors for financial health or financial performance of the county is how many months of expenditures are available in your fund balance or your reserves. We recommend anywhere from three to five months, or 25% to 40% of your expenditures are sitting in your reserves, and the county is well above those balances in each fund except mental health, which is expected, given the nature, we wouldn't expect a large fund balance to carry forward in that fund. So overall, very healthy. A general fund is at almost 85%. All right. Financial statement, findings and recommendations. You'll see here that we had one recommendation, internal control weakness. So this is really something that can be celebrated. The fact that there is only one material audit adjustment after the county had posted and processed thousands of transactions during the year is really a testimony and speaks to the quality of the internal controls and processes that are in place. Management is very receptive to any recommendations that we have as part of the audit. In this case, the adjustment was related to capital assets, and it is our understanding that procedures and changes have been made already to make sure that this adjustment wouldn't happen in the future. So overall, compared to some of the other local governments we audit, this is very good results. It should be celebrated. As part of the financial statement audit, we do test the federal grants. Total federal expenditures for the year came in at about $3.8 million. Of that, the coronavirus relief funds represented $2.3 million of that total, or about 61%. So that is the federal grant program that we did test, and we had no compliance or internal control findings related to the spending of those federal grant dollars. We also took a look at some of the Iowa State compliance items as it relates to kind of the financial activity. We had two minor recommendations here, the first one being that, A, on the certified budget, with the issuance of some of the new debt, there is expenditures associated with that through the bond issue costs, and those expenditures were incurred before the budget was amended. We recommend that anytime it looks like expenditures may be incurred that exceed the budget, that the budget be amended before the actual expenditure be incurred. By year end, the budget had been amended, so your year-end budget actual statement does not reflect that you're over budget. And the last item here relates to donations. This is kind of a hot topic this year with the State Auditor's Office. We're seeing this kind of across the board. So we did look at this a little closer than we had in the past. We noted about $60,000 was dispersed to nonprofits that could be classified as a gift or a donation. So our recommendation there would be to seize those types of donations. If there's some type of service agreement or service that that nonprofit is providing the county, there should be a service agreement in place to kind of document the services that are being provided in exchange for those revenues. Overall, very clean audit. It was a pleasure working with the county. We really appreciate all the time and effort that goes into pulling the information together, preparing those closeout schedules. Special thanks to James Perry and the Auditor's Office, and then thank you to the different departments that promptly get us the information we need in order to do our job efficiently. Are there any questions on the audit results or any of the financial results?
First of all, thank you for the large font.
Oh.
It would appear that the county is in remarkable financial condition.
I agree.
And a big thanks to our staff, as well as Mr. Perry, too, to, like I say, keeping us there, getting to that point. So and we did have a lot of discussions on donations. Think we have that kind of sorted out for now, what we want to do going forward, but that, yeah, that those ceased for the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Want to give you a brief roads update this morning. All roads are in good condition. We are mixing more sand for a few of the shops in the next few days. Most of the crews are out cutting brush in the next week, and then we have received our steel that we, several weeks ago, if you recall, we had the... We were attempting to have the public hearing for the steel beams. We did quote those, and we did have... We have received those now, and our bridge crew is working on constructing those four bridge beams in the shop this winter. Can I answer any questions this time? Thank you.
Morning, Mike.
Morning, Word. Mike Hendrickson, Director, Blackhawk County Conservation. If you recall, back in August, we did have an accident with one of our vehicles, our dump truck, and it was determined it was totaled. And so we did work through the insurance process, and we collected some payment, or the county collected some payment for that truck. Since then, we've been in a search for a replacement vehicle. It's not been an easy process due to the number of units that are available, and especially the number of units that are available that fit into our budget, so to speak. But we were lucky enough to find one in Marshfield, Wisconsin, and we just made that deal right before the holidays, and our guys picked that up in between Christmas and New Year's, so we have that truck in our possession. We ended up purchasing a Sterling L-8500. It did come complete with plow unit on the front, wings on the side to plow snow, and a stainless steel spreader on the back, so it came fully equipped for moving snow, which was important with that truck. And we did make a deal with them for just slightly over $56,000. It's a 2007, and it appears to me that our mechanic is looking at it now. We looked it over really well, and we asked that dealer to make... to do some upgrades on it, and they were... And they did do that for us. So they completed that, and then we did receive the truck, and our mechanic is looking at it over now. But it appears to be a good unit that should serve us for quite a few years down the road. So just want to let you know, we've taken care of that situation. And that truck then also is being paid for out of our budget, and so that's how it's all taken care of.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other department heads, elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for December 28, 2021, and January 3, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Moved in second. Any discussion? Are we back here?
Yeah, we lost the screen here.
We lost the screen.
Or maybe from our presentation. Probably is.
I still have the audit.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Black for us, anyway.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the items? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Cholka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is other business, nine A. This is a motion directed to county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 to through January 18th in room 201, the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, under proposed ordinance number 77-262 from requests submitted by Mark Becker to rezone 1.5 acres from A to AR.
Second?
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Just a suggestion. I think we should have probably included the address in that at 6925 Amesboro Avenue, just like we usually do. Did you get that, Tim? 6925. Thanks. Sure.
Thank you. With that addition, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a motion directed to county auditor to advertise for a public...
This is where the amendment, those amendments.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. So just this short thing is all I need to read, Mike?
Yeah, and they are resolutions.
Okay.
Seth, you're going to talk about them, though.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah.
So why don't we read the proposed resolution first, then we'll have discussion.
Nine B, then nine C?
Yep, nine B and then nine C.
This is amend to read, amendment to read, resolution to approve minor plat for Chad and Heather Coffin at 6734 Pointer Road to allow the building of three single-family homes on 13.13 acres.
So moved? Second.
Okay. Yeah, this is a request submitted by Chad and Heather Coffin, the plat 13.13 acres, in order to allow for the construction of three new single-family homes at 6734 Pointer Road, and legal... And basically, yeah, the 13.13 acres to be platted is located at 6734 Pointer Road. All three parcels containing the 1.13 acres to be platted was approved to rezone 4.95 acres from agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District, planning and zoning commission recommended approval at the regular meeting on September 21st, 2021, was approved by the Board of Supervisors in October 19, 2021. The surrounding plat area consists of agricultural land with some rural homes, is in the zone A Agricultural District to the north and east, agricultural and agriculture residential district to the south, agricultural district and agricultural limited district, and AR Agricultural Residential District, and the city of Gilbertville to the west. The plat area is designated as agricultural on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The surrounding area is designed... Is designated as agricultural to north and east, residential to the south, agricultural residential parks and open space, and the city of Gilbert to the west. None of the areas in a special flood hazard area. Yeah, the applicant wishes to plat 1.13 acres and three new lots. The 13.13 acre plat area is large enough to accommodate three new developer lots that has 4.95 acres owned AR Agricultural Residential District, meets lot size requirements for the three proposed lots, are greater than 1.5 acres in size. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of the minor plat at the regular meeting on December 21st, 2021.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Cholka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Item nine C is Rogers is to amend, to read, resolution to approve minor plat from Robert Rogers at 8133 Buck Ridge Road to allow the building of a new single-family home on 7.21 acres. Seth, all yours.
Okay, yeah, this is the 7.21 acre plat area in question is at 133 Buck Ridge Road, which is approximately 1,500 feet south of the Winslow Road and Buck Ridge Road intersection. The one parcel containing the 2.71 acres to be platted was recommended for approval to rezone 3.76 acres from agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to construct one new single-family home. And... Yeah, the plat area is designated as residential on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The surrounding area is designated as residential and agriculture to the west. Surrounding area is residential, parks and open space to the north, south, and east. Approximately less than 1.5% of the plat area is located in a special flood hazard area, is designated by FEMA. But according to the preliminary map, none of the land will be in the... Will be in the special flood hazard area. The applicant wishes to plat the 7.21 acres and the two lots. The 1.63 acres already contains a home, and the 5.5 acre area to be platted is large enough to accommodate a lot that has 2.13 acres owned AR Agricultural Residential District, meets the lot in size requirements, but being greater than 1.5 acres in size and wider than 150 feet. The minor plat was unanimously approved by the planning and zoning commission at the regular meeting on December 21st, 2021. The technical review committee had no concerns regarding the plat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
I'll make a motion.
In a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Cholka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is nine D, discussion, county preparedness and possible updates on COVID-19. Good morning, Nefisa.
Good morning, Board. I'm Nefisa Boyne, Blackhawk County Public Health. The year has started a little different than what we had anticipated, unfortunately. So as of this morning, we've had 217 new cases today. morning, we've had 217 new cases today, which increased our positivity rate to 25.9%. Between December 30th to January 3rd, we had 544 cases in, in Blackhawk County. Our vaccination status as of January 3rd, we have 70% of Blackhawk County residents age 12 and over that have received at least one dose of COVID-19 vaccine and 65.9% fully vaccinated. We have 12.1% of children ages five and 11 years old vaccinated in, in the county. On January 3rd, the FDA expanded the EUA of Pfizer booster doses to include the 12 through 15 years old and expanded the EUA of pediatric Pfizer doses to include a third dose for those age five to 11 who are immunocompromised. Omicron variant is still being monitored. As of December 30th, a total of 41 Omicron variants have been identified in Iowa. Delta currently remains the dominant variant strain among the sequenced specimens in Iowa. In, in terms of hospitalization rates, we're also seeing that it's the, the majority of the people that are hospitalized or in ICU are individuals that are not vaccinated. So we're still continuing to push the message for people to get vaccinated. We're doing our very best in terms of educating and just, yeah, it's tough, tough start of the year.
Anything else, Nefisa? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Any other update on COVID-19? Anyone wants to bring that? Next on the agenda is work session. This is discussion, possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year 23 Blackhawk County budget.
Good morning. What I want to do today, we have quite a bit of different departments that are lined up and ready to speak to their budgets, answer any questions that you may have. Everyone should have the summary sheets that I've provided. I will provide them on the screen as well. So I did want to provide a brief intro, then we'll move into the board's budget. Then we have the medical examiner, board general supervision, general assistants, recorder, auditor, elections, HR and civil service, VA department and treasurer. And then we'll, we'll finish up with, redo with the treasurer and then we'll answer any questions on the day. So to, to kick it off, I did want to provide a brief update. This is going to be new for this FY23 budget. Our mental health levy is no longer a part of Blackhawk County. So that is something that is going to fall directly to the state. So you will see a dramatic decrease in our mental health levy this year.
Do you have that right off top or in your notes of what that is?
It was, it was about $3.6 million.
Thank you.
The other, the other item I wanted to talk about today is our phase out for commercial backfill. Every year, we kind of have a, a discussion on how much to budget for, for the revenue, if it's going to go away, if it's not. But right now, we have a, an itemized out, six-year phase out dollar amount. So that's nice. Typically, we budget about $500,000 for that, just being able to, to hedge the difference. If we get it, great. If we don't, it's, it's less of a hit on our budget. But that is, that is clear and concise now. We get a budget $855,000 for the commercial backfill, which is actually an increase from the, the typical $500,000. So that's going to be nice and it's going to provide some guidance moving forward. For the nonprofits, you heard Miranda talk about donations.
James, I got a question on that.
Yeah.
What, what was the total amount on the commercial backfill that we're receiving a year?
That, that is the, that is going to be the total amount. So, so last year, we received 977,000. Moving into FY23, it's going to phase it out. So our next, so our next year, we're going to receive in FY23, we're going to receive 855,000. In FY24, I, I can grab it here, but it's, it's going to be less than eventually in a, in a six-year phase out. So it's, it is going to go away, but it's going to go away incrementally.
So we're going to receive 807,000 in FY23. So are we budgeting any above and beyond that or we're just going to, that's going to be an in out?
No, so that's, so that's going to be an in out. And that's, that's what I was, sorry if I wasn't clear, but typically we budget 500,000 for that. And so what that does is that increases our revenue and allows us to plan accordingly because typically we're just kind of, we're just kind of guessing frankly. And, and that's going to be something that, that we have a little bit more clarity. So our revenue increased from last fiscal year because we budgeted 500,000, we actually get to increase our revenues by 355,000. So it's just a little bit more clear, a little bit more concise. And it, it takes away our, you know, our, our sessions on, on what to budget for, if, if we should budget more revenue, if we shouldn't, if it's going away or not. So it's, it's just a little bit more clarity, I guess.
Do you have that for six-year increments, like what we're doing then?
Yep, and I, I can do that.
That'd be great.
So there'll, there'll be no tax dollars involved in FY23 is what you're saying? Because we're going to receive 800 some thousand. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We are going to receive $855,000 from the commercial backfill.
Okay, so there's no tax dollars involved then?
Correct.
Okay.
That we don't have to tax for it.
Right, yeah. So that's, that's just going to be the amount, that's, that's going to directly offset what, what we tax for, for those funds. Does that make sense? Yes.
We have it. We receive it. It's kind of an in.
Correct, yep. Yeah, so it, yeah, so it, it directly lowers our levy is, is what that does.
And there are several items I want to bring up in the intro for the board to consider.
You bet.
James might answer some of the questions as we're getting further into your intro.
You bet. The fourth thing is public service. You heard, or, yeah, so you heard Miranda talk about donations and we kind of got slapped on the hand for that. I think every county in Iowa did. But what we can do and, and what we'll do this fiscal year is decide on a public service and decide on a dollar amount. That way, we're moving forward with a dollar amounts and into the budgets. If we decide on a public service, then what we'll do is we will send out bids either right before FY23 or at the beginning of FY23. And it'll work just as if we're budgeting for any other capital item.
Are there, is there an opportunity to use ARP funds for any of these potentially?
Yeah, absolutely. And that was, that's actually my next, my next target here is ARP funding for the, not only the one-time capital projects, but there are benefits that is outlined for ARP dollars that for economic development or tourism or the negative impacts of COVID-19. So.
So do they have to have it used up the same way we have to, James? You know, at the end of the three-year period or whatever it is?
Correct, yep, yep.
So ongoing.
James, when you mentioned economic development, I read that code on that and I talked to some people up at ISAC and what they're saying is like, we could use it for economic development if we have a, a project in mind, but just giving it to somebody and they say it's for economic development, that's not good enough. So it's kind of how you read that code on interpretation on economic development. So the way I, I read it in the way they were telling me up in DuBois is it's for that, but you got to have a project lined up. You just can't give it to an organization and say, well, we're going to use it for economic development.
I think that's similar to our public services, that when we talked about public services, we want them to be very specific about what they're providing and that type of thing.
Precisely.
And what the, Mr. Little, what the auditors telling us on this, because I've consulted with the auditor on this issue, is that we've got to, number one, identify the, the public purpose of, before we ever, we ever hire anybody to provide a service, whether it be economic development or anything else. And so the board would need to take action to identify that public purpose and have it be reflected somewhere in writing before we would be, we be looking at people who could provide that. They've indicated that that will help to ensure compliance with the, with the auditor's directive.
I, I got one more question then for you on that. And that makes sense. The process for Waterloo and the Cedar Falls are pretty simple because they stay within their boundaries. Do we have to consider as a board of supervisor, the county, when we're talking about services, we're talking about services, not only the Waterloo Cedar Falls, we're talking about the Laports, the Dunkertons, the Elkra and Evansdale, blah, 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 Hudson's. Seems that we represent all of them rather than services that just are concentrated, say in Waterloo or just concentrated in Cedar Falls. Should, should we be looking at the whole picture when we say, okay, what services? Do they help all of Blackhawk County, not just one area?
Well, I think generally it's a good idea to, to consider the county at large when looking at something that's going to, that's going to provide services that serve a public purpose. However, I don't think that prevents the board from saying, well, one party or one, one part of the county needs help in area X, one other part of the county might be, need help in some other area. And so it's, yeah, we've got to look at the whole county as a board of supervisors like we do in everything we do, but that's not to say that we, we, we couldn't serve the public good in one part of the county where the need is different than another and, and not provide that same service to another part just because the need isn't in that other part. I hope that makes sense.
And then up to us ultimately to decide on the groups that.
Exactly, yep.
I, I think a good question for the board, where we do offer services, if we do, is to whatever those services are, ask that who actually are you helping? Or what's the services for? Or who? So we got somewhat of an idea.
Yeah. And, and I think that's going to be, that's going to be part of the plan once we get, get past the budgeting phase where we, where we budget these public purpose dollars or these public service dollars. There's going to be a process through which we learn what these potential recipients of these dollars do to serve the public purposes that the, that the board is identifying.
Thanks.
So James, along that same line, are, are we responsible for, say we give money to an organization, are we, once we give it to them, are we responsible anymore for that money? Or are, do they take full responsibility for that money?
Yeah, so then what they'll do is they'll provide us receipts and, and then that's way, that way we'll be able to provide that to the auditors.
Checking balances.
Yep, absolutely.
Sounds good.
And I've seen examples of the written agreements that counties have with some of these entities and it's not as complicated as I thought it would be.
Correct.
And I think a good way to, to stay on top of it is to put a provision in these agreements. It says if there's any money left over that hasn't been used for Blackhawk County, you know, the public service for which it was supposed to be used for, that money should be refunded. And I don't think you'll see any pushback from the organizations in regards to that.
I don't think that'll happen either. I think there'll be enough need. So, thank you.
Okay, James.
All right. So I'm going to share my screen here and we're just going to get kicked off with the board office here.
Yeah, before we get to that point, I just want to address a couple of areas where I think the county needs to shore things up a little bit better. GIS, it's been talked about for years. I think that needs to be discussed and considered in this process. Also, our workman's comp claims are through the roof. It's been talked about for years. I've talked to several department heads. A safety coordinator, safety coordinator slash risk manager. I hate adding positions, but.
But in the long run, they'll save us money.
Right, it's costing us money.
Right.
Yep.
And it's also creating liability. And those are the two items, specifically two positions. And I know the county attorney's office has a part-time attorney position that we are considering.
Yes.
Yeah, there's three areas right there that we're lacking. We covered the public-private partnerships, but I want to make sure that that gets discussed and on the schedule as we proceed through the process. And that's all I, those are the points I wanted to cover. That's all I had in regard to the introduction.
I think we, in addition to that.
Aren't all those areas going to be covered by the individual departments? Like when the county attorney addresses the board?
Yes.
Addressing that part-time position.
The county attorney, I'm sorry.
Either IT or one of them's going to address the GIS. So they're all going to fall under some department, aren't they?
Yeah, and I just want to give, these are just deficiencies that I noticed within our operations. And if anybody was shy about bringing any of those forward, I just wanted to let them know that we're aware of them and bring them forward and let us consider it.
Well, and if we're talking about positions, I thought one of those also that we might want to consider, there'd been some difference of opinion on whether or not we had enough deputies. I guess there are too many deputies depending on working in security in the courthouse. I don't know if that's something we'd want to discuss maybe later too.
Yeah, I know. I saw the sheriff here. I think he'll bring it forward. I, I think we'd be fine with one security deputy. I, I wanted to talk with Tony more about that before I brought it up.
Oh, I just meant sometime during budget.
These would be good discussions.
Yeah, I think these had to be today.
Yeah.
Something that we need to discuss. That would be great. And I think that you touched on it as well, but we talked about the nonprofits for '22 were something we wanted to do, whether we do it as part of the budget session, but in a relatively soon period here, maybe in December.
Yes, yes.
Bring that back up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to you, James.
Sorry, James.
Oh, no.
Going to be a lot of this back and forth.
All right. So these are what we've been looking at for a few years now. You'll see a summary page kind of broken down. The board office doesn't have any revenues. Otherwise, you would see revenues on there as well. And then you would just see your expenses, your less revenues, and then your grand total at the bottom. That's, that would be what, would be the tax askings moving into FY23. So for the board office, it's, this one's pretty cut and dry. We had our salary and benefits increase by 1.8%. Our operating expenses dropped down by 7,400. A lot of that is, there's excess dollars in publishing. And, and why that is, is because we went down from three newspapers down to two newspapers. And so we're seeing quite a bit of those leftover dollars. And so that's something that I wanted to kind of curtail a little bit, just because it, it's just unnecessary to keep it that high. You know, I, I kind of see a trend that, you know, maybe we'll start looking at, you know, a digital newspaper or, or publishing online or social media, websites, that kind of thing. But, but for now, it's just, we're, we're able to kind of curtail that a little bit. So, so overall, the, the department itself is looking at a 0.28% increase. Again, most, most of that is just salary and benefits. I have plugged in 3% for salary and benefits, which is just kind of been the normal. We can, we'll, we'll address that here probably next week if we want to change that. But that's just kind of the, the placeholder for right now.
Would you say 3%, James? 3% for who?
Across the board. That's, that's going to be your non-bargaining. Your bargaining, your, your bargaining units already have their, already have their raises in place. So the ones that we decide are going to be the non-bargaining.
So in this case here, the boardroom budget, this is the first one you're going through, you talk, you got salaries in there. Are you including the elected officials' comp salaries?
Correct, yep.
So basically it's three, you're done, it's 3% for the non-bargaining, but you're including the 4.5% for the board?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
I was just saying a, a 3% across the board for non-bargaining is what I had placed in there.
But you did include comp increases in all the budgets that had elected officials and deputies and.
Yep.
Yeah.
So unless you have any questions on our budget that we have for the board office, we can move forward. Nope.
Pretty simple.
Pretty, pretty easy on this one, so.
0.28% outrageous.
Yeah.
Uh, next, we'll have the medical examiner.
Do you want to review that before he speaks or just have him? Do you want to review that before he speaks, or just have him start?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let Mark kick it off here, and then I'll be able to fill in in any questions that you may have as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Beckley, medical examiner, as James mentioned. We have submitted a request for fee increases for this next upcoming session. We have held our budget stable for the last 16 years, and have not really had any increases at that point, so we did apply for a increase the last two years, but due to a couple of complications, it didn't come through the board. I think all of you have received a printout of what my letter and requests were. I'd really like to just answer questions if you'd, if you want to go that route.
Would you review those a little bit, I guess, for the public as well, since they wouldn't have seen that?
What we're looking at is, when we are called out to an investigation, we are talking to the individuals at the scene. They will, by what we find out, we determine whether we have a case that we have to go out on and make a full investigation, or if we're doing a, what we call a partial investigation, where we can do it over the phone, then we go ahead and collect information on the person who died from the hospital, or from the clinic, or wherever, and then we make our reports from that. So there's two different types of investigations. The full investigation, we were charging 175, we're requesting it to go up to 200. For the partial investigations, we were doing 35, and we're requesting 50. The processing fee, which includes what I do, basically, I review all cases and sign off on same, check the corrections and whatever needs to be done, and that was 75, and we were going to go to 90 on that. Those are the main changes we were requesting. We initially had requested a increase for transportation fees. The funeral homes have been letting us know that their expenses are way above what we are providing, which was $200 a trip.
We, do you have an idea of how much they were, like you say, what they felt they're spared, just because?
Dolls, Lox, Richardson's, and Hegarty Wyckoff, we averaged it out, their expenses were 274. We are requesting 250, and those are the changes that we basically were looking at.
Actually, Lynda, what the code called for, the legislature they passed this year, it just says that the county has to reimburse for all expenses. So I guess the county's paying 58 cents roughly for federal mileage, and then whatever expenses, which would probably be the driver. We had an out-of-county one, I think it was Bonona, they charged us $50 an hour, I believe, for the driver, plus mileage. Around here, obviously, it wouldn't be that much for mileage from Black Hawk County to Ankeny. The question is, what are they going to charge us for their driver that goes up there and brings the individual back? The auditor's office, I talked to them yesterday, they're doing a fine job, they're requesting all receipts show that the mileage and also the expenses, and if they got up there too high, then the county certainly would have the option to question them. I think we're in the process of changing our county policy to states $200, and we'll probably have it a little bit more generalized, and we'll have that dollar figure in there. So I talked to one of the larger funeral homes, and they're still currently charging the $200, and I think mileage, but I'm not sure, but they hadn't had any increases yet.
We had checked with 35 counties locally, or around the area, and this is the figures that we came up with. I don't know what to say about that. The other thing is, a number of the funeral homes are, just as Tom mentioned, working with us, sticking with the $200 fee and all, but I think once they're aware that if they itemize things, the price is going to go up. And that's, that's where I think we're going to be hitting against it.
But you think 250 makes everyone a little more comfortable with the.
Well, I mean, I had talked to some of the funeral homes, and they said that's much more closer to their expenses, and they would be reasonable with that. But again, if they start itemizing all sorts of other things into it, we have no control of that.
Dr. Beckley, have you calculated what mileage would be for Black Hawk County to Ankeny at roughly 58 cents a mile?
I, James, did that, I believe. Do you have that figure, James?
I am looking up here quick.
Because it does specify, I believe, mileage, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, some of the counties are paying, are charging mileage, plus drivers' fees, plus their whatever else fees that they throw in. So there, it can become a big figure here.
Yeah, actually, some of the smaller ones are because they obviously don't have the body in the Black Hawk County, like Buchanan County, where you said you checked with.
Buchanan was charging us $640.
Yeah.
And I basically refused to pay that, and then the auditor's office mentioned that if it were itemized, we were stuck, and I, I don't know what to say with that, you know? In my mind, that's way out of line. There were two counties that were too low. When I figured the 35 counties, I basically threw out three, I threw out Buchanan's, for being too high, and I threw out two others, Scott and Van Buren, because they were too low at 75. So then I, the rest of them were all figured into my total, which was average fee of, you know, whatever I came up with here.
The mileage total's $134.
Yeah.
Turned back.
So we know that's going to be there.
Yeah.
And the question is what other expenses they charge us, but again, I feel very confident our auditor's office, they're keeping a sharp eye on this, and if anything comes up that doesn't look quite right, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Well, they run everything past me, and then I basically refuse it or not, and then we send it back to the county and see what they're going to do with it.
Yeah, because it's been a pretty good partnership, I think, with you guys for a long time.
They've done a great job for it, and we've been pretty much staying on top of it at the $200 fee, but I'm still getting comments from the local, local funeral homes, that they basically feel this isn't covering their expense.
That information, and maybe you don't want to share, but I was going to say, that information that you've done, when you've averaged these numbers and looked at all those counties, is that something you could make available to us, just to see?
Oh, it's in my letter, in my.
For all of them?
Oh, you mean for the whole group?
No, I meant for the ones that you looked at. I just meant, because at some point, you had to look at all of them and then average it. But I know, I saw your average amount, I just was curious.
No, that's, that's, I've got it in my papers right here.
Oh, great, not today, but yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
Another option that James and I had kind of tossed around is, we could save a great deal of money if we had our own vehicle and did the transport both down and back. At the present time, we have a contract with Mercy One for their ambulance service for transport down. They bill us out at, let's see, what is it, 657, we were contracted as 416, so they're giving us that as the contract fee for transport down. Okay, so that's, each trip is going to be a 416. And then the funeral home is picking the people up, and that's another 200 or whatever they're going to charge, so that's, what, 650, something like that.
Yeah, and I like this option.
We could basically pay off a vehicle within about two, two and a half years, and then we'd be saving money from the, saving expense, not money, but saving expense from that time on.
And we saw other counties were doing this and said the same claim.
Well, Kaiser Corson Funeral Home is covering for, let's see, I believe it's Butler and Bremer, and they are providing all transport, both down and backs to Ankeny, for all the funeral homes in those counties. So I'm sure it's, it's been done.
Who would be the drivers?
Jason Hernandez, as you know, is our, one of our investigators, he's also in charge of medical services for the fire department, and he feels there should be no problem with getting some of the fire department to.
Oh, to drive?
Yeah, that was one of my concerns, is getting drivers, but with that connection.
Would they be employees of Black Hawk County?
I do not know that.
I would assume they'd be contracted, but I can't imagine we'd want to employ them.
Correct, that's.
They wouldn't fall under any of our comp accidents, things like that.
I can't answer that one.
Sure.
I think there needs to be a little bit more research done on that. Obviously, if there's any savings, it would be on the, the transport down, because I think the 250 in mileage is pretty reasonable for being picked up.
Yeah, well.
Then you got to replace the car how many years down the road? Where are you going to keep the vehicle? You got insurance on it, maintenance, there's quite a bit of cost involved, rather than just buying a vehicle and having a fireman drive it down there.
Well, we were looking long-term on this thing. It wasn't going to be anything that was going to be a dramatic change in this next year or two.
Yeah, I think it's something to look at.
Yeah, well, we're just trying to save a little bit of money for the, for the whole overall system downline, you know, that's really what we're looking at.
What type of vehicle do you think, or I don't know what's used now, I was going to say that, I'm just curious to.
James had kind of, kind of wondering about that.
Looked into, I meant, just to think of what's.
You don't need anything fancy, of course, I mean, we're just.
No, but I meant, you still want to do, yeah, I know, respect, I guess.
Yeah, I think the last time that we looked at it, we don't, we don't need anything refrigerated, we don't need anything fancy, just needs to be kind of just plain Jane.
Okay.
I didn't see any regulations on it, I didn't see anything like that, and, you know, I will say this as well, providing that vehicle is something that we could use ARP funds for, and that's, and that was where my thought mentality was, you know, providing this, and, yeah, we're, you're exactly right, I mean, 250 might be reasonable, but who's to say 300 is not reasonable, or 350? I mean, it, it doesn't, I don't know if the code is great on explicitly saying, you know, reasonable, it just says, just to refund the funeral directors. So if.
It doesn't put a reasonability standard on it.
So, you know, if, if we're at 300, or let's say 350, you know, we'll use 300, yeah, you're, the full trip is, is about, you know, over $700. And if we're looking at potentially, you know, the numbers that Mark and I were, were kind of working back and forth is, is $150, you know, per trip. And so that's, that's a $300 trip per individual, and, you know, that, that could cut into those costs pretty good, so.
We'd be saving hundreds every, every person.
Every person, and with 55, last time that we calculated, it adds up pretty quickly. And so that's where, that's where Mark and I were thinking, you know, on, I'll say, a heavy year, it, I mean, we could save tens of thousands, so.
Dr., how many average years of transport?
We had 50, well, my fingers are for 2020, so it was 55 in that year, and I think it's probably going to be about that same on an average.
55 in a year, then up and down?
Yep, somewhere 55 to 60 is probably going to be our number of transports to Ankeny.
Okay.
James, you had mentioned, so maybe this is something you need to provide for us, full-cost savings regarding, I think, that purchase of that vehicle, I think you said in your email, just to show us, I guess, those numbers?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean.
So we can look at that kind of, I think, in print on, on that savings, and how you've done that.
Yep, a lot of those are going to be, you know, general as well, but if we're saving $300 per individual, that's $16,500 per year. And so depending on the price of the vehicle, you're looking at a year and a half, two years, just to pay that back, and then that's just further savings every year after.
Yeah.
From then on, it's all savings.
Yeah, but if you could just.
Except expenses, maintenance and things.
Okay, is there any? I'm trying to think if there's contradictions.
Any other questions or anything?
I don't think so, I think some of them are for us. If we do, we can always reach out to you, or go through James or something, too.
I will get that list of all the counties for you, and.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Nice to see you.
All right, so I mean, uh.
So you have built into this budget any, all the things he's asked for, requested, they're in there now currently?
Yep, that is, that is all in there.
Great vehicle.
Well, the vehicle would be ARP, so that wouldn't be actually in the budget specifically.
Well, that's if we agree to do it ARP, but we necessarily wouldn't have to do it.
You wouldn't have to, no.
And how are you thinking that qualified in ARP, just something that.
Well, for one, well, for one, you wouldn't have to, I mean, you don't have to qualify those specific dollars within, within ARP guidelines, you would be able to use the lost revenue portion, so regardless, even if it didn't fit, you'd be able to use those funds for that.
Good, thanks.
Yep. Next, I'll have Colleen with General Assistance come up here.
Good morning, Colleen, General Assistance.
Good morning.
Things are still just very different for the General Assistance program, just because of the pandemic, and there's just so many different funds available, so a lot of our job right now is just navigating the clients through the different programs that are available. We're still assisting, but we're just trying to find what's available for them. The overall budget that I'm requesting is actually decreasing by about $25,000. The only thing that won't be, and James will be increasing my salary and benefits, but other than that, I'm decreasing it by 25,000. To date, for FY '22, the administrative budget is right on target. The service budget is actually down 25%, or it's only spent 25%, and there again, that's just because of all the other programs available for the basic needs. The treatment budget for substance abuse right now is about right on target. The only increase for administrative budget for FY '23 will be for my salary budget, or salary benefits. I'm actually not going to increase, I'm not requesting an increase for the agencies this coming fiscal year. It's not anything due on their part, it's just that the intakes have been down quite a bit, so I just think for this year, we can hold steady on what we've given them in the past fiscal year.
And you're talking really the same reason, as far as what you see shelter and what you've reduced.
Exactly. The number of, we've, to date for fiscal year '22, we've, the agencies have done about 600 intakes, that's down 300 intakes from fiscal year '21. Again, it's nothing that they're doing wrong, it's just that we're doing a lot of referrals, information, it's just, so that's the only reason I'm not increasing what I'm asking for them for this fiscal year, coming fiscal year. And the only changes I'm requesting in the service budget, I'm just requesting an increase of 2,000 for the room and board for motel stays. We've been utilizing this line item a little bit more, just because of the pandemic, but it's nothing like what we had initially expected by any means, so. And then I'm going to decrease the shelter line item by 25,000, and the utility line item by 10,000, same reasons for that, it's just, there's still a lot of other funds available, so we just haven't been spending like what we had in the past. Sooner or later, that's going to catch up, but right now, I think we can decrease that for one fiscal year. And then under the treatment budget for substance abuse services, I've increased the request by 7,500. That includes $500 increase for judicial hospital referee, they usually request a 3% increase for that. And then I'll increase by 2,000 for the transportation, and 5,000 for hospital stays. It's just, the number of substance abuse committals has definitely been on the rise this fiscal year, and I think we've seen that coming with the pandemic, I know that was predicted, and that's definitely starting to hit. And then the only revenues that the GA program generates are from substance abuse reimbursements, and then interim assistance program. Both of those can vary greatly. I've decreased those budget amount revenues from 4,000 to 3,500. I think we're even below that this fiscal year, but it's just something that's hard to predict. Then the only change I'll be requesting for the General Assistance Policy for FY '23 is to increase the income guidelines. I would like to match them to be 100% of the poverty guidelines. I have checked with quite a few counties within the state, they're all over the place with what their income guidelines are, but there are quite a few of them that are the 100%. It's been way too many years since we've even increased the guidelines at all, so I would definitely like to get that done, because it seems like we're just having to deny way too many people.
And I think you said, it wasn't just the term "way too many," it was like 15.
Oh, as far as what?
15 years since we.
Yes, and, yeah, it's, it's, I think, from what I could see, it's been at least 10, 15 years since we've increased. Right now, for one person, the income guidelines is 699. I just feel that that's, it's just getting to the uncomfortable stages, there's just too many people. There's just too many people that we're not able to assist right now, so.
When you said rents have increased substantially.
Yes, the rent amounts, the homeless coordinators have said that the rents have increased substantially, which I can understand. The landlords haven't had a fund two years either, so I just think we need to look at something different with that. And even if we increase the income guidelines, if someone comes in for assistance, just because they're within the income guidelines, doesn't mean we have to assist. We'll still make sure that they're paying something towards their basic needs in order for us to be able to assist.
Because I think I asked you a question about that, like what would be the numbers that we would increase to? Or what, did you have any idea?
It's hard to predict as far as how many more people we would be assisting. But from doing this, I just don't think a lot more people will be requesting assistance than are now. We might be able to assist a few more than what we have been. But I think with what I'm requesting for the service budget for FY23, it would sustain the income guidelines. I hope I'm correct with that, but I can't imagine that it won't.
You had kind of mentioned too that this was not like a pilot, but a trial or something, something you wanted to do and, and see how it would go, I guess, the first year.
Yeah, I would like to just see how the increase would go for the first year. If it goes okay and we can stay within the, the budget, I would like to just match the 100% of the poverty guidelines going forward so we could keep it. I mean, because it's just been way too long now and I just think it would, I, I know a lot of agencies and a lot of other counties just do that every year. And the poverty guidelines don't increase very much, so it wouldn't be that big of a deal.
Yeah, that's, that sounds very reasonable to me that you would look at that as the, like say, as the rates change, that we look at it and you do it incrementally instead of looking at it. Even somewhat like Dr. Bickley's, as you keep an eye on those rates and those types of things, instead of all of a sudden you have big jumps or.
Yes, I want to thank Dr. Bickley too. I work with him very, very closely and it has been. As far as funeral services, that's definitely on the rise with what we're having to assist with. But I think I'm comfortable with keeping that line item with what we are too, so. Other than that, that's it unless anybody has any questions. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Good job, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
All right, sorry. Were you getting some? Oh, okay.
Back to James.
Perfect. Sandy, I'll have you step up with the Recorder's Budget here.
Morning, Sandy.
Good morning, Board, Sandy Smith, County Recorder. Overall, I am presenting a budget with a decrease of nearly 19 or 20%. Mainly that's from the additional revenue that I'm projecting with a booming housing market, favorable interest rates and the median price of a home increasing. All of that's going to contribute to the additional revenues and recording fees. As you all know, the majority of our revenue comes from the recording of instruments. All of this will play into that recording of instruments. We have not seen our passport fees increase yet to our pre-pandemic levels, but they are slowly coming back. We will continue to do the outreach programs, do the passport fairs, make ourselves available as much as we can to increase those revenues. I was able to show a small increase in the operating, the small decrease in operating expenses mainly due to this being an off season for boat renewals. I will not have the printing and the postage fees that we would have. We're currently in the middle of a three-year boat renewal cycle. That's basically all I have. Is there any questions?
And that's just the reduction then for postage is because of the.
And the printing fees involved with printing the postcards.
Okay.
Thank you, Sandy.
Oh, thank you.
The one thing I did want to bring up, and I, I forgot to bring it up at the very beginning, Dan touched on a little bit, but our, our workers' compensation rates, they, they did skyrocket. And so you'll see that almost every department is, is looking at 150% increase in their workers' comp rates, premiums, so. And, and you'll see it up there. It's 145% for the Recorder's Office. And so that's going to be a common theme as we move on or move forward. Recorder's Office is, is pretty small comparatively speaking to other departments, but we can address that as, as we get to it as well, so.
James, when you're talking percent, what countywide, what are you talking dollar amount increases going to cost us?
Um, I haven't calculated it for countywide, but I, I did send that, I, I did send the email just regarding the sheriff's department specifically was $185,000 just for that one department. So if you're looking at, the health department would be another large one, conservation is a big one. And, and I think those would be the engineer's office as well, and, and we can address those. I can, I can get a total amount increase for workers' comp as well.
Is any of these, is this, any of this related to COVID or we're talking something completely different?
I can let Amanda speak to the rates for IMWCA a little bit and, and why we're seeing an increase. I just know that we're seeing a large increase, a substantially large increase.
Why don't you get the board a total dollar amount of the county and then also also average it out the last three years?
Yeah, we can cover that with Tim and I can look at that together. Some of it has been our loss claims over the past 10 years and five years. They do an, an average and, you know, we can't necessarily control what happened 10 years ago, but that's how it kind of bases those off the injuries that they see in certain fields of work. So it's kind of caught up with us, I would say. Some of it has fallen off because of, we saw a little bit fall off with country view, but we're still, the formula didn't change. And so we're kind of going off of data from large claims and injuries five and 10 years ago. So we can work on improving that so that those don't go up in the future. But right now, like our claims have been currently in the past couple of years, actually, you know, they're going down, but we want to keep that trend, so.
Claims are going down?
Um, most of that's because country view, honestly. But we have done a better job just within the past year, but we've got room to go to improve on this. And, and yeah, that's kind of where the, Dan was speaking about a safety coordinator. Our IMWCA rep is kind of, we've been tossing that idea around or at least having, you know, a dedicated safety budget, safety consultant, some things that can help us improve our safety here to keep those claims down and for us to be a good member to IMWCA.
Because we had tried that with a vendor and it just doesn't as successful as we liked.
Yes, and, you know, we work so closely with PDCM and IMWCA, you know, through that. But I guess it's becoming a bit more of a concern that do we have a dedicated person to safety here to help support the departments and the staff to protect our most valued assets, which are really our workforce here, so.
Did you say it's, it's kind of all the departments or is there just one or two that are really kicking that average up for comp claims?
So I would, it's, it's across multiple departments. It's not just one. You know, again, at country view, we had a lot larger opportunity for injuries there with.
Yeah, but that's been gone three or four years. Let's, I'm talking about now, last year, this year.
No, it can be.
Is it accidents or what?
Right, it could be some, someone slipping out in our parking lot. It can be slipping in the hallway. It can be something that just, it could be some of it is inmate related. Some of it is related just to the work as to how accidents occur and how we do our work. But it's not just one department driving it. They're kind of scattered throughout and I, you know, not to point fault at anyone, it's just, do we need to, do we have an opportunity here to try and maybe improve our safety practices and, and awareness and really improve the culture here?
When you say slipping in the parking lot, are you talking about our employees, obviously?
Right, so this isn't, so we're, right, so this isn't anything to do then outside of the just regular liability that the county faces, which is, you know, the public coming in and out of our buildings. So this is specific to employee-related injury and illness, so. Now COVID wasn't really something that IMWCA, we didn't, we were very fortunate that no large claims came out of anybody, you know, related to a work comp claim with COVID. So it's really not being driven by COVID. It's just the nature of where our injuries were residing the past 10 and five years that's kind of caught up with us.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to try to be proactive and do something, but I guess you're going to have to, or somebody's going to have to show me hiring a safety person, how that's going to help somebody slipping in the parking lot or in the hallway or an accident. Because they're all at, the deputies all have training constantly, the engineer department does. So I guess if we're going to go down that route of hiring somebody, I guess you got to show, how's that going to make a difference?
And I think that's where, you know, this is, we're kind of proposing it falling under Rory's department. And you're right, Tom, we can certainly come forward and have some of that information to help. I mean, you want, if you're going to invest in safety, you want to do it right and make sure that what you're dedicating someone to is going to have an outcome. Right now, I can, I just can't say that we have anybody truly 100% dedicated to investigating safety issues, to understanding where the safety, like where the patterns are when we are seeing these claims come across or when it's near misses. And maybe, you know, we were fortunate to not have a large claim, but it could have resulted in a larger claim. It's not going to be foolproof and 100% prevent somebody from slipping out somewhere. But IMWCA has certainly been pushing us to be more proactive and to have that investigation piece be more prevalent in the county. And that's an area that, whether it's a dedicated person or whether it's consulting with someone or, like I mentioned, you know, I'd like at a minimum some kind of a budget with our safety practices so that we're understanding, like Kathy did, understanding the exposures that staff are being exposed to.
So, so this individual, basically what we're talking about then would be more of an investigator?
Well, I mean, that would be a part of their role, certainly, that, you know, that gets really pushed on the departments right now and the supervisors. And it's not that they don't do a good job of it, but it, there's not really a driving force behind it that's dedicating to understanding and helping the departments understand that investigation piece as to why something occurred and getting to a root cause. So, you know, I've been looking at other counties throughout the state that have them, both large and small, safety coordinator, risk manager, those are some that come up. We can look at kind of a couple of options that the board can consider and look at justifying that with the, the claims history that we've had.
How's the department heads receiving this? I mean, like the sheriff, I mean, is he receptive to something like this? Having an investigator investigate his accidents and stuff?
Sure, so we can, I can let some of the department heads speak at some point. I've had definitely an interest from department heads come to me since I've taken over the HR director role that this has been needed. At one time, HR had an HR manager that was dedicated to safety when we had four FTEs. So that was something that people felt very confident in, having somebody that was closely monitored and working well with the departments to understand their safety needs. I think all the departments are interested in keeping our staff, you know, safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'm glad to point that out because I think it wasn't just your recommendation. This has come to you from several people.
Yeah, and honestly, it was the fellow department heads. This was not my, and really what happened was when IMWCA came to me and said, hey, this isn't looking too good. That's when I thought, okay, yeah, we should probably look at some alternatives and a safety coordinator seems rather.
I think it could be a good idea, but I just, I want to hear from the sheriff and from the engineer because I would imagine them are two top departments as far as they deal with a lot of machinery and out on the road.
Well, and even, yeah, and, and even some of the departments that you don't expect, some of the office special, I mean, it just doesn't take much to have a large claim to where, and it, it's something that could have been avoidable, that we think it's just natural that you're going to be, but, you know, whether it's careful or whatever is that you need to do, but, yeah.
Could we get a list, could we get a list by department of the number of claims?
I could probably ask for that, sure.
Yeah.
I could work with our rep on that.
Yeah, I don't need, we don't need names or nothing, just what type of an injury and what department?
Yeah, no, we can definitely have a conversation about that and go from there.
And that's where country view played into it quite a bit when you talk about the 10 years.
Yeah, so, and again, it's just a formula they use. It's a very complex formula, but how they determine our rates, it's not necessarily what's happening today, but what happened historically that's driving those. So, but again, you know, we're, we're improving and like us to continue that trend. But I think we need to kind of look at some other options too as to who can dedicate and be committed to that kind of a role or need, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you just want to stay up there?
Yeah.
I suppose. Okay. So I've got the human resources and civil service. I'll go over human resources, I guess, first unless James would like to cover it. But so some of the change that you see in here, some of that's driven by benefits with the new staff that we have, just a change from single to family from the previous year. The other in operating expense, so the bulk of that is actually a grant. It's a safety grant that I would like us to consider. It's a recommendation from our work comp, IMWCA, but there is a, a grant that's made available to us, a $5,000 grant. I put that in for revenue as well and it's focused on winter walking footwear. So that's something that, why that's gone up a little bit. The other part of that 7,000 is advertising. In the past, we have taken an aver, when we have recruiting, we often rely on the department to tell us how much they want to spend on advertising. We never had a dedicated budget to just do standard advertising. We had about 55 job openings last year and I don't see that going down any. And I would like us to start utilizing just kind of small incremental amounts to actually drive advertising efforts. And then still work with departments if they want to do anything above and beyond, like a $50 or $30 boost, things like that, then we'll work with them to dedicate some resources to like specific online posting. So this is a, a change, something that I'd like to try this year. Recruiting is getting tougher and tougher and the number one job source seems to be Indeed. And a lot of our stuff gets shoved to the bottom because we're not spending a lot of money on that website. And then, of course, looking at other tools and ways that we can attract applicants and, and top applicants to the county, so.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Amanda.
Uh, civil service didn't change.
No, so the, the only, the only changes to civil service are, I mean, those, those are just tied to HR's salary. So it's just a, it's just a portion of HR salary that gets reduced from the HR budget into the civil service budget. And then when you start looking at the operating expenses, nothing has changed.
Are we talking about ARPA yet or those items?
You can, if you would like. I have it designated for Thursday, the 13th, just to kind of go over all ARP projects.
Okay. I can wait or I can.
Have you got, what, something, I guess, just to mention? I wouldn't.
Yep, I'll mention it, sure. So, you know, I've struggled a little bit to kind of figure out where HR fits in the ARPA funding and I'm still trying to get an idea. I have some things I'd like to kind of talk with Al, our IT Director, when it comes to some of our softwares that we use with applicant tracking and the ability to have more mobile access to things with our application. And, but the one thing that I guess I want the board to consider is possibly looking at a compensation study or like a workforce study. As we're seeing, you know, as we evolve and change, needs change throughout the departments as to what kind of work needs to be done and how it should be compensated. I had recently sent you all the, oh, I think it was the county comparison for department head salaries. And several of those were on the low end, which is where we typically reside. You know, the county, when it comes to compensation, you can either like the market, lead the market or meet the market. And that's something that I think if you guys are wanting to make a change to, we typically like the market, if we want to meet the market or be a little bit closer, might be something to consider budgeting a compensation study for.
And we haven't had one for quite some time, right? It was.
I think it's been.
99 or something.
Even earlier than that. Even earlier than that. Debbie at one time told me she thought it might have been close to the 80s. So, and we have had a lot of changes in positions. And, you know, with the unions having a two-year extension, it gives us a little bit of time too to prepare for that. We've got the public safety where it should be, but, you know, whether that's an interest in the board to kind of evaluate the others as well, in addition to the non-bargaining. But, and those I've seen, was talking with other county HR directors, anywhere from 40 to 60,000 dollars to bring an outside source in. We could look at focusing on only one area. Our office could support some of the compensation studies. We do them kind of on a as-needed basis. But to do a full-blown one might require a bit of assistance from, and it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have an outside view sometimes, I think, into some of the structure that we have maintained. So.
Well, and as it gets more difficult to attract people or hire people too, I think you want to make certain that you're doing an adequate job of compensating people so that they're, we're not the last ones that they consider or they don't come to us for.
And we're not looking at just compensation. We'll be bringing to you, we did a market study on our benefits as well. I had our consultants do that this year to really determine how competitive are we with our benefit structure. And we have some good recommendations for you all that doesn't really change the structure of the, of just more of what claims are covered. But they're relatively minor things, but can have a larger, I guess, impact on our staff and those that are drawn here. So. But that's one thing I just wanted to toss out there.
Yeah.
As a potential idea.
Appreciate it.
And I may bring stuff, you know, I guess, so Phase Two, James, that's mostly during this budget session, but like.
So when we have that 13th meeting or whatever, if we want more information or if you've come prepared with more information on that, to Debbie, okay. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, I'll let you speak to the auditor's budget here.
Okay. I know Grant's online or he was online. So I say anything out of turn, feel free to chime in. Our budget's pretty basic. We don't have any changes in staffing proposed, and we're going to live within our existing operating budget. Shuffled a couple of line items to right-size those, but otherwise, it's essentially flat except for the salary and benefit increases for existing staff. So I don't know if anybody had any questions at all.
Yep, this one's pretty straightforward. You'll see the operating expenses go up by $120, but the revenue is also increasing by $150. So it's actually offsetting by $30, which is extremely small. And then the salary benefits are really driving that, driving that cost. So.
Just granted, nothing to add. No, that's good.
We're good. We will move on to the elections office here.
Good morning.
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 And I have Grant with me too, so please chime in. You will see an increase in our budget over last year, and that's just due to the nature of the work that we do. We're able to, in even fiscal years, we're able to do most of the work with our small staff of three. But in odd fiscal years, when we move into a general election, it's just, it's way too much work for the three of us to do. Also, I just want to throw in that as the legislature keeps narrowing the absentee window, our numbers do not go down. It just means that we have double, triple the work to do in a short amount of time. So we just need the extra people to come in and help us. So that's where you're seeing the salary and benefits change, that change over last year because again, we were able to do most of the work with just three of us. The other thing that I wanted to add in here, I originally also included, because I'm talking about staffing, I originally in this budget also included $60,000 because we will need additional space, which means workstations, computers and whatnot. If any of you have been by our office during a general election, we're packed in there like sardines and it's not very efficient work. We're also in six to eight different places throughout the courthouse and over at the warehouse. I know that there's a space study going on and there hopefully will be a long-term fix, but I don't believe that that will happen by the fall of 2022, where I will need to bring in additional 20 people to help us. So I've been working with Rory that we're hoping to utilize some space over at the warehouse, but that does not have any workstations or computers. So we will need to budget that, whether that is in our elections budget where I had it or if we want to move that to ARP funds. Just wanted to make sure that that was brought up in this presentation because I, wherever it goes, it's going, I'm sorry.
How much was that?
I had budgeted 60,000.
Yep. So I wanted this to be brought up only because it's, it's an absolute need. And, and so, but again, you know, it, either it's ARP or it's the, or it's the operating capital for this department. It is an absolute need, but it meets every guideline that it needs to for ARP. So when, when talking with Karen, you know, I did pull it out of the operational capital and I did put it in ARP because it does meet those qualifications. And it will allow us to kind of lower that levy a little bit, or not, not lower it, I should say, let me correct myself, but not increase it as much. So that's, that's, that's why I wanted to have the conversation here because it is, it's, it is a need, whether it be in this operational capital or ARP, but we did place it in ARP. So.
Kind of qualifies definitely.
And again, I talked about that shortened window. I mean, we're not seeing, we're only seeing our absentee numbers go up in 2022. That was 40,000 absentees we processed in-house. And now we're down to a 20 days, but really, we have to pretty much get these same stuff to knock the door within 10 days.
Well, that's good news. I guess at least it isn't discouraging people from voting.
It's not. It's just the work is still there, just in a shorter amount of time. And then some of the other operating expenses, this would be, only happens once every 10 years, but we do have redistricting costs associated with our budget for this next fiscal year. Some of our precincts will be changing, planning location changes, and so we have to communicate that to the voters as required. But I would say the biggest change is a general election with additional.
That's the additional printing costs and stuff you're talking.
The additional printing costs, yes, would be redistricting. We also do in even fiscal year, or in odd fiscal years, we do a national change of address and a couple other voter maintenance pieces that require us to do more printing and communicating to voters.
And the minor equipment?
The minor equipment is we're going through a precinct dateless. Our precinct dateless program is our electronic poll book program that is currently in a rewrite process. So we're gonna need a little bit different equipment to be compatible with that rewrite, which is planning to be employed or deployed in, we're hoping to do some pilot project with it before the primary this summer, but will be in full deployment before the general election in 2022. And then we have depleted our absentee supply too. So we're gonna need quite a few new envelopes to be printed moving into this next general election. That is a nutshell.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't say we're going down this year, but next, next year, I'll come back to say we're going down again. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor.
All right. Next, I have Yolando. I believe you're online here, so I'll share, I will share the numbers here and I'll let you speak to him.
Good morning, board. My name is Yolando Lovell. I'm Black Rock County Veterans Affairs. Again, just wanted to give an opportunity, thank you for being able to service our veterans in the best light going forward. We'll talk more of that tomorrow at our board meeting. But we did have a commission meeting last month, and at our commission meeting, we did go over our budget and we did line by line, and the commission voted on, on the budget and in particular. So we kind of stayed consistent. We moved the approach of a zero-sum game. And you can see we're consistent with pretty much the expenses and with the grand total of, when it comes to salary and benefits. In particular, with, I only have, you know, when you look at the FTE, I have four employees to include me. So there's not a lot changing there. And then when we turn over to the operating expenses, just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight in that standpoint. We looked at a couple of things going forward in the future, and then what was some of our major requests or some unusual requests that we received just during the pandemic timeframe. And one of them was medication. There's some veterans, elderly veterans who are using pulse grips where they're supposed to call in. And when they get to a percentage of their medication, they call in and then the VA sends them that medication. The male has caused some delays in receiving that medication in time and fashion. And in some cases, they call late and then they look for us for assistance in getting a temporary subscription for medication. So we increased our medication. We took some from another line item, but to increase medication because we're starting to see some of those calls in saying, hey, I don't have the medication that the VA sent me. I don't have the money to pay for it. Could you guys help me out in that standpoint? We did look at, every year, we've been consistent in trying to cut our budget, especially when it comes to operating expenses, trying to be as proficient as possible in that standpoint. But we did look at cost of living adjustment, inflation, and the unknowns of what's gonna happen by July. So a couple of things that we did do is we looked at increasing our transportation, and that's where the gas cars come in. We're starting to see an increase in that. And so we took from one line item, increased our gas cars where we can help veterans, in particular with the VA ban still not running consistently from the CBOC here in Waterloo down to Iowa City. We're seeing more requests for gas assistance to get to their medical appointments down in Iowa City. But the gas prices being about $3.95. So when you give a veteran a $20 gas card, that really is not efficient. So we want to look at going into this year is increasing that to $20, $25. We've been, we've been grateful because a lot of the donations that we got in the last couple of months allowed us to purchase gas cards off-site for hope, alleviate costs. But we don't know how that donation's gonna go into the year. So we're paying in support of that. And then the last thing we took down are funeral expenses. And one of the things I've noticed is also is that with the COVID environment, even though the families request that they need funeral assistance for cremation, which is be up to $2,400, depending on where it's done, whether it's US Cremation Society or through one of their local funeral homes, because it can be as low as $1,800. But we found out that also some of the family members, they can require, if that veteran died from COVID, they can get that COVID assistance in that standpoint. So a lot of the retroactive payment that we get from the VA, whether it's burial assistance, it's all retroactive in that standpoint. But it's a good thing. But we noticed that the families are getting some of that paid back if it's related to COVID. So we're still looking at making different cuts throughout these line items. But we stayed consistent for this year, expecting to do some more cuts next year in that standpoint. Other than that, we're just standing by to address any questions or concerns. We've got about 7,500 veterans right now in the population, and we're trying to do our best. We look forward to this next year and continually provide the best services and put our best foot forward in servicing our veteran community.
Thank you, Yolando.
Thank you.
All right. And finally, last but not least, Rita in the treasurer's office.
Hi, Rita Schmidt, Black Rock County Treasurer. Hi. As far as revenue, the investments, interest rates are still not there. We're not gonna see an increase, hopefully, this next coming year. So what we had budgeted last year was 250,000 for investments interest. We're going to lower that to 226,000. So there's 24,000 reduction in interest. Auto registration, we have, usually is a 2% increase. And so there's an increase of 22,000 there. And to offset that 2,000, we have lowered our expenses, the legal fees. We have done some work on that and we did not have to have that high of a need. So we lowered that by 2,000. So there's no increase in expenses and no capital. Any questions?
I don't think there wasn't really anything.
Good job, Rita.
I agree.
Thank you.
So that wraps up today. On, on Thursday, we can start right away at 9:00 AM with the attorney's office, the engineer, the health department, and the sheriff. And we'll move on to the, the following week for Tuesday. We'll have IT conservation, maintenance, any capital discussions, ARP capital discussions, salary and benefit discussions. And then that's when I would like to get a good idea of the, the public purpose and the dollar amount. So if you want to be thinking about that, we'll be, I would like to at least get a dollar amount or at least a thought mentality is on, on January 11th.
And you've sent us the sheriff's information. You'll be sending out the others, I'm assuming?
Yep.